November sixth, Lake Stevens Planning Commission meeting, we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, in attendance, Commissioner Morton?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Jennifer Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Doer?
Here.
Mr. Packard?
Here.
Commissioner Huxford?
I'm here.
All right, and we are all here. Move on to, is there any, any guests that are?
We have PSC this evening.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, first let's, we'll get to the first discussion item, if we get the opportunity to take a look at the minutes. Any questions or amendments or? All right, we had a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minute on the last meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is for the October 2nd and 9th meetings.
And well done, by the way.
Yes.
That was a heavy lifting part, well done.
Yes. All right, and that brings us to the PSC presentation. Thank you, Jacqueline.
Good evening, thank you for having me, my name is Jacqueline Sterna. I'm the Senior Municipal Liaison Manager for Snohomish and Island County jurisdictions. Snohomish County, I have gas customers and Island County electric service customers. This evening, I brought my colleague Amy Towsley, who has a tremendous amount of experience with comprehensive plans and has served as a planning commissioner herself down south. Before I begin, I just want to make sure that you can see my screen, do you see PSC's Clean Energy Transformation slide?
No, we do not.
No, okay, let's try that again. What does it look now?
And we see it now, Jacqueline.
Excellent, thank you. Well, proceed with the presentation, and at the end, I can, I can answer any questions that you may have, and Amy is also available to answer any questions. Bear with me. There we go. Puget Sound Energy is an energy company that has been in Washington for over 150 years. We serve 10 counties, we have about 1.5 million customers, and in the past decade or so, we've gone through the most significant change in the structure of our company and with clean energy goals than we have in the past 150. Our core purpose still remains the same, that we are committed to providing a safe, reliable, and equitable delivery of energy to our customers under all circumstances. Some of the regulatory environment that I mentioned that's changed in the last five years includes the 2019 bill, the Clean Energy Transformation Act, that has set PSC goals to be carbon neutral by 2030, and to have 100% clean electricity supply by 2045. Also in 2019, the Clean Buildings Act was, was passed, and that sets standards for building performance for large buildings, 50,000 square feet and above. And in 2021, we have the Climate Commitment Act, the Cap and Invest Act, that is working at reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the largest industries and polluters. We also have the Clean Fuel Standard that was passed in 2021, because transportation accounts for close to half, about 45% of greenhouse gas emissions in our state. And then most recent, the decarb bill, House Bill 1589, that some of you may be familiar with, it was recently, well, just today. There was an initiative. Part of this bill was to allow PSC to align electric and gas planning in order to meet the state's clean energy goals. So, PSC staff is working hard to reach our aspirations for clean energy, and that includes our operations and electric supply. We are working hard to prevent and repair any electric or gas leaks. We want to be 100% carbon free by 2045. We're working towards natural gas sales for customer end use, meaning we're working to reduce carbon emissions within the gas supply by 30% by 2030. Then we have something called Beyond PSC Reported Emissions, in which we're working to help other sectors reduce carbon through electric vehicles, LNG fuel for marine and trucking, as well as renewable natural gas, and then supporting any type of upstream methane reductions in our gas supply. And we have been working hard to make progress to achieve these goals, we've been working quite aggressively to pursue renewable energy resources, anything from large generation projects to contracts. In 2022, just over 40% of our electricity came from clean energy, and in 2025, we're aiming for 63% renewable energy in our portfolio. And of course, to meet these ambitious clean energy goals, we are working hard, and it can be complicated and complex at times. It's a fast pace, the scale of what we're working towards is unprecedented within the state and nationally. We do anticipate that the demand for electricity will only increase due to the public policy environment that we have in the state. There are some challenges, for example, not all of the technologies are commercially available at this time. However, we know that every five years, we're making leaps and bounds with research and development. And some of our clean energy resources are intermittent, meaning when the sun shines, solar is wonderful, when the wind blows, the wind farms are productive, but in those off-peak times, we still have to find fuel to fill in and meet the need. And also, some other challenges that we're facing are that the electric grid needs to be strengthened and expanded, it needs to be modernized so that we can continue the transition for 2030 and 2045 goals. So the amount of power that PSC is required to obtain is significant. By 2045, we're looking at 15,000 megawatts, so that's essentially doubling what we have now, and continuing to find renewable resources. And you can see the list on the right of your screen for scale. There's a tremendous amount of clean energy that would include non-wire and wire solutions ranging from additional wind turbines, solar plants, battery, battery storage plants, solar plus battery installations in residences and commercial buildings, and so on and so forth. And as we're scaling up with clean energy, we are seeing and anticipating that there will be increased demand. Even with energy conservation and energy efficiency appliances and other efficiency measures, we do anticipate that consumption will grow by at least 15% in the next 20 years. And we are anticipating that in that same timeframe, 20 years, that electric vehicle charging will be 25, 30% of our entire system load. We've noted that state and local building codes are being revised and changed to support electrification. We've also found that our customers are installing more air conditioners, which adds to the load in the summertime. So, in addition to that, we're also seeing that we're having large, large load customers, like data centers and industry placing requests. So there is quite a bit of demand. And we know that we're not in it alone, we're partnering with our customers, whether they're municipalities, commercial or residential families, who can take proactive measures to support the clean energy transition. There's basically three categories that our partners are acting in. Transportation Electrification, Demand Response, and DER, Distributed Energy Resources. So I'll start with the DERs. Customer adoption of distributed energy resources include rooftop solar, batteries, smart appliances. And the DER support a two-way flow of energy, which offers the utility a lot of flexibility to meet rising demand. We call this energy orchestration, with that give and take flowing back and forth between the utility and our customers. And the Demand Response, so, human behavior is what it is, but we have certain programs that encourage people to conserve energy as a key strategy, so in extreme, extreme weather, cold snaps in January, heat waves in August, we're incentivizing customers to engage in our flex programs so that they're reducing their energy usage during the peak demand points. And that ultimately helps to minimize the strain on the grid and offset the generation that we'd have to buy in those critical moments. And we continue to work and recognize the need for on-demand clean energy and to replace the carbon emitting resources. In 2025, we will no longer have coal from the coal strip in Montana, that will be out of our portfolio. And to replace that, we're looking at 750 megawatts of base load generation that we need to acquire. And that's going to be a clean energy that is easily dispatched and flexible. We know that there are many emerging technologies coming onto the market scene. However, the variability of need, that especially comes with renewables like wind and solar, can, can make it challenging for resource planning and for response. So we absolutely anticipate that we will continue to use natural gas to bridge the divide or bridge the gap. We're continuing to take an all-of-the-above approach to clean energy, meaning increasing the menu of choices and what our customers can, can access. We recently invested in what's called a small modular nuclear reactor facility, you may have heard something about that on the news with Amazon in partnership. We're also exploring an interesting technology that's called long-duration battery storage. It's an iron-air battery, which essentially the rust creates the energy off of that battery. And we're also, we're also participating in something called the Northwest Hydrogen Hub, in which we received a billion dollars of federal funding to explore the use and applications of hydrogen within our fuel system. And one of the challenges we have is that most of the clean energy resources are on the east side of the state, and that poses some very unique challenges regarding transmission, distribution, and even siting permitting and planning these new clean energy projects. So we're continuing, we continue to partner with our friends on the east side of the state and to invest in our system so that we can meet clean energy goals. One of our recent endeavors includes our wildfire initiative. Puget Sound Energy has a culture of total safety, which means that we view our work and our service through a lens of safety. We're incredibly conscientious, and one of the most recent safety concerns that has arisen in the last 10 years is the threat of wildfire and how electric systems have interacted with wildfire in other states. So, this year, we took a comprehensive approach in examining our system through field inspections, helicopter patrols, and assessed, we used data technology, including data from our meteorologist, to assess the most sensitive or vulnerable communities and areas to wildfire. And we worked very hard to harden the system, install something called TreeWire, which is essentially a coated wire that prevents sparking, update any poles, remove vegetation, and that was the first push, we'll continue working with those vulnerable communities to make sure that we are preventing wildfire. There's also an additional tool that we rolled out this year and announced to communities, it's called PSPS, Public Safety Power Shut Off. So that's a tool in which Puget Sound Energy would notify communities in the event of high-risk situations, drought, high wind, high likelihood of a wildfire sparking. We'd be able to proactively turn off and de-energize the lines to prevent a fire from sparking and overtaking a community. And that is considered a, you know, a, a tool that we could use if needed. And looping back to natural gas, because Lake Stevens is one of my guest municipalities, we do see natural gas playing a pivotal, important role in our clean energy transition. We have over 900,000 natural gas customers, and there are many, many customers who use our natural gas as a primary source of heat. We found that natural gas is great during times of peak demand, and we're, we are looking at careful strategic ways to decarbonize our, our gas system. So some of the initiatives that we're working on with our natural gas include renewable natural gas, which is a lower carbon, has lower carbon content. We're also looking at hydrogen, as I mentioned previously, with our research and participation in the hydrogen hub. And we're also using fuel called R99, that's a renewable diesel fuel. We continue to support our customers and their efforts to engage in energy conservation to lower demand. We're also developing what's called a targeted electrification strategy that focuses on vulnerable communities or areas where it's difficult to bring in our gas lines. We do have what's called an obligation to serve, and that's something that we honor through the regulatory environment and our service to customers. If, if they want gas and we're able to, to bring in the pipe for it, then we are happy to do that. We are reducing methane emissions in our gas system, we have something called a find-it-fix-it approach. So, no leak is too small for us to fix it. And the additional, the additional challenge of moving through this clean energy transformation, acquiring additional renewable energy over the next five and 20 years, is that we do want to be committed to energy equity and affordability for our customers. So that is one of the challenges that we've been facing, and we work by bringing rate cases to the UTC pretty much every year, asking how we can maintain affordable energy service to our customers while also meeting these ambitious state goals. Our Customer Engagement Group has created billing assistance programs, including the Bill Discount Rate Program. They're also working with folks who have past due balances, and we have a, a larger rate of programs and rebates for weatherization, energy efficient appliances, energy savings. And that is based on incentivizing our customers to, to take steps that they need to. So again, on the topic of equity, and energy equity, we are committed to serving at least 30% of these clean energy benefits to underserved communities. And while this is a challenging path ahead of us, we have a wonderful staff that's focused and motivated, excited to be bringing this, these clean energy aspirational goals into fruition throughout our 10-county service area. And that's everything I have for you at this time. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Connor Davis, I just have a general question about the, just general concern for Lake Stevens residents. I know that there's a, it's between a 17 and 20% increase to rates over the next two years. That's not on a kilowatt-hour basis, that's just, those are, those are fees that are paid for the new developments in Montana and the Baker River, is that correct?
Is this, are you talking electric service or gas service?
Electric service.
So your electric service in Lake Stevens should be provided by Snowpud. In our, I believe in our service territory with Lake Stevens, we provide gas, but our electric. I believe that Lake Stevens would be in the Snowpud. In their rate case, I'm not sure how they work their rate case, but I could put you in touch with, with Business Account Services contact that I have there, who would know.
All right, thank you so much, Jacqueline.
Sure.
I have a quick question, this is Commissioner Jennifer Davis. Are these, uh, goals internal to PSC if federal standards are going to change potentially in the next year or two? Will the, will these goals still be pursued?
This is-
Eight mandated, or I'm just curious what the, the impetus is?
Sure, well, as I, as I explained in one of the earlier slides, there's five legislative actions through the Washington State Legislature. That's what's put us on this clean energy path in such an ambitious way. We, we, we report to or accountable to the Utility, the Washington UTC Utility and Trade Commission for rates, but we're also accountable to FERC and NERC, so National Electric Reliability Council, that looks at system reliability, and then Federal Energy Resource Council, that has a powerful regulatory body over all, all energy utilities throughout the country. So what may happen federally, of course, that could always influence things in the state, but for the most part, we're, we're working under what directives have been created by the Washington State Legislature.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And actually, on that note, is, there's, you know, there is some concern with, I mean, I'm going back to this project in Montana in particular, where, say there is a shift from, at the federal level in policy about the encouragement of renewable energy, which could very well happen here over the next year or two. That project that, you know, ratepayers are spending about a half a billion dollars for in Montana, the wind farm, if there is a shift at the federal level that, that limits the state's ability to do any kind of interstate transmission of power, that's crossing two states. My biggest concern is that ratepayers in this next year are going to, going to start paying this fee when that project may not come to fruition, and I say this from, and when I moved, when I lived in Florida, we had Duke Energy, and ratepayers there were paid, paid 1.6 billion dollars over the course of 10 years for a nuclear power plant that was never built.
I've, I've heard about this case study, as a case study.
Shifted, yeah. So, just out of interest for our ratepayers here, what are the, you know, is, there's very well, that could be a shift at the federal level, particularly as it relates to interstate transmission of electricity?
From what I know about the Beaver Creek Wind Project, it's almost completely built up, I think they have 20 or 30 more windmills to finish building. They're looking at an interconnection next year, and to, you know, have to run through a series of safety checks, but that energy is supposed to be online, transmitted to Western Washington by the end of 2025. Amy, you may want to jump in if you know more about transmission federal policy. I, I would have to take your concerns and do a little bit of research and inquire with the transmission policy folks internally to kind of get into the, the deeper, the deeper explanation of why you're asking and whether that would be feasible or not.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, hopefully I'm coming through. I think the one thing I would add is, again, how we are so keenly connected with the Utilities Transportation Commission, and again, when we do our integrated resource planning for both the gas and electric systems, and, and how some of these broader issues that are frankly way, way above my, my brain power, but it's a great question that you asked, though. But that Beaver Creek is really considered to be, you know, going to be completed here within the next federal fiscal year, if you will, and then coming online as Jacqueline indicated. So, but I look to that Integrated Resource Plan as the mechanism of how Puget addresses a lot of the concerns or questions that you may have, commissioners. Does that help, Jacqueline?
It does, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Uh, this is Commissioner Doer. While I recognize that Lake Stevens is not an electricity customer, I think I just had a question regarding the, the overall presentation in that vein. There was a lot of discussion about renewable energy in there, and especially green energy in there, and I was curious, outside of the small reactors for like Amazon data centers that, that you guys are looking into, is there much nuclear energy in the portfolio for Puget Sound Energy? And is there interest or in an expansion of that as our energy increase, energy needs increase?
That's, that's an excellent question. The SMR is like a pilot, and partnering with Amazon means that it's shared. So what I understand PSC is doing is testing it out, evaluating, and then will later determine when and where small modular reactors will be, will make the most sense and be available. I would foresee siting in industrial zones, which would probably make the most sense. I think it's quite likely that in the next 10 years, as we're, as PSC and other companies are looking into SMRs, that there will be more, more acceptance and understanding that this is third-generation nuclear, it's not the nuclear plants like that we're familiar with with Hanford and, you know, from a different time, a different place, that there really has been a significant improvement and safety improvement, and tremendous capacity for carbon-free, safe, reliable energy. So that, you know, it's, there's an awareness of that technology, but it's not ready, we're not ready to deploy that at this point in time for, you know, mass public use. Amy, did you think that I captured that accurately?
Well, I think that-
It's just part of the, the composition, and I think again, it's not just going to be for PSC, but for Snowpud, City Light, TPU, both east and western Washington, so I think everybody has to be very, you know, kind of be very comprehensive in what we're looking forward on this, and I think that's the other reason why we wanted to lean in on the, you know, the comp plan updates, and again, the climate elements that are going to be developed over the years as well, so. Whoops. I think my volume was off.
I, I heard you.
Okay, okay, sorry. Go back off.
There any other questions or comments?
I don't mean this the wrong way, but what, what were we supposed to get out of this presentation? Meaning, I have a lot of questions as a, an individual, I just don't know what questions to be asking as a planning commission member. So, did PSC say, hey, we want to come share this, did we ask PSC to come?
Oh, I, I initiated, I placed, I've been working with your planning department on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and, and other, other municipalities going through the comp plan update, as says Amy, and we just wanted to do some proactive information sharing, just to let you know where we're at, what we're doing, how and why. And just going to give you a general overview of, of where the utility's at, what we anticipate between now and 2030, and then, you know, longer range, 20-year range to 2045, just so that you have some context. And if you have any questions about the utility element or the climate element, Amy and I have both been pretty, pretty involved with other municipalities and making sure that we're getting you the information you need.
Okay, I appreciate that, I guess I'll say I'm still a little bit confused about what we do with this information, so I'm maybe asking the other commissioners, I mean, how do you internalize this and how does this affect decisions? how do you internalize this? And how does this affect decisions that we make within our community? Uh, again, just trying to figure out how we use this. Again, very interesting as a consumer, but struggling to figure out what this means for me as a planning commissioner.
I'll go ahead and touch on that.
Please.
So for us, that's an excellent question, but they are a purveyor here in the city for natural gas. And so working with them for development projects, they have their own 20-year plan, just like the school district does, the electrical does, the sewer district does. So when they outreach to one of our planners here at the city, if they could come and present their long-range plan to us and to the commission specifically, um, we said yes. And so it's just information only. Anything else that you wanted to add to?
Yeah, I would just note that as part of this periodic update, we adopted not to adopt our standalone climate change element at this point. But when the city does in the coming years, when we adopt that, we incorporated a lot of that information into the environment, to natural resources chapter, and also into the utilities chapter and touched on a lot of the things uh, that the PSE staff has talked about tonight, but we will be incorporating some of this updated information. And we wanted to wait for maybe some additional legislative direction from Olympia and maybe some potential additional mandates as far as how we need to plan for clean energy as it relates to climate change adaptation and mitigation. So, it is generally information just provided to the planning commission that'll, as we move into future work plans in future years, we'll be incorporating into that climate change element.
Excellent. Well, we look forward to working with you when the time comes.
Thank you. Is the intent to give this same presentation to the city council?
Uh, that can be arranged. Uh, that would be, uh, Robert Knoll is your local government affairs, person for, uh, Lake Stevens City Council. So technically, typically he works with elected officials. And as a municipal liaison manager, I work with Public Works Planning Departments, planning commissions. But we'd be more than happy to make sure that, um, that the electeds receive this information as well.
And just for the commission's education, they did reach out to Melissa Place. She'll see that she's online here also because she did, um, she was the planner for the Climate Action Plan. And so they outreach to her initially. So that's the background on why they're here this evening.
Great. Thank you.
In the vein of the far outside horizon planning, you mentioned 2045 kind of as like a outside date. I'm curious if, um, I have an interest in, uh, cold fusion. And I know that there's a company in Everett that's working on trying to get it up to scale, but the estimates I saw were 20 to 30 years. Um, so is that anything that's even remotely? I know that these are efforts that are focused on the more near term, but is that something that is like on the far outside?
I, yes, I believe that, um, our company is interested in research and development. And as I mentioned very vaguely that, you know, there are a lot of technologies that are being developed and honed that aren't commercially available yet. But in the future, something like cold fusion, um, that would just add to that menu of energy choices for our customers to choose from, uh, which is really exciting that something like that, um, could happen in, you know, in our lifetime.
With that, thank you so much, Jacqueline.
Thank you.
Information.
Thank you for, for having, for having us. I really appreciate your time this evening. If you have any questions or need to, or follow-up information, I'm, I'm available by cell phone and email, uh, which I've shared with both Melissa and Dawn.
Thank you so much.
Have a great evening.
Likewise. All right. And that gets us to the work plan.
It does.
Mr. Wright. All right. Dynamic duo. Let's hear it.
All right. Well, well, here we go this evening. So we are giving Russ a break this evening. And I'll be presenting Dave's here for technical backup. And after the PSE presentation, your work program looks a little light compared to what they have planned. So in your packet for the 2025 work program, you'll see that one thing that you have is the schedule. I would like to bring to your attention that the schedule is broken up in quarters and that a lot of the items or proposed amendments will be overlapping each other. So at the end, when we have a discussion, we'll talk about how it looks and how we coordinate bringing those items to you for meaningful conversation. Then as the backup, we have the staff report in here. The staff report, what it does is it outlines each amendment. And it also lists the regulatory compliance items that we're looking for with each item and then also a deadline. Let's go back here. Tonight it's broken up into two phases. I wanted to throw in the current work program. And the reason being is because it's very closely and tightly related to the long-range work program. And primarily use the planning commission. You normally only hear about the long-range work program, right? You get a lot of Dave time. We love Dave, but there are actually four other planners on staff who you might not actually see. And then we have Russ, our director. So what do this other four planners do? Just wanted to share with you what we do do before we go into the long-range program. These are just some highlights. They're based on two-year averages from the years 2022 and 2023. The rest of us planners, we're, our primary focus is in charge of our day-to-day operations here at the city. And what we do is we process on an average of 200 land use applications for review, split among us, that's a lot. And then in addition, planners also review building permits. On an average between these two years, we're looking at a thousand building permits. Uh, just to give you an idea, one single family building permit has 20 inspections. So we had around 8,000 inspections in, I think it was 2023. Nope, it was 2022. And then 2023, they dropped to around 4,500. So our two inspectors here at the city are busy people. They average about 18 inspections a day, just to give you an idea. Our code enforcement officer, great person. If you haven't met him, consider yourself lucky because he does have an average of 53 active complaints a year. Our goal is to have those cases or complaints not turn into cases. In other words, we get willing compliance from people. The ones that don't, they turn into active code cases. There's been an average over the past two years of 153 active code enforcement cases. So our code enforcement officer, Cameron, he is a busy guy. The other projects that we have coming forward in 2025, besides reviewing permits and doing inspections, we have economic development. This is primarily Russ's focus. He has a lot of high-profile projects. These include the sale and development of city-owned property, along with his city hall project, which is the campus down south. And then in addition, the museum project and all sorts of other stuff that he does besides managing us. In addition, hard, it probably is the hard project. In addition, our department has been the lead. Hopefully one year we won't be the lead for public records requests. We do get a lot of public records requests. People want to know about their land use applications, building permits, et cetera. So we do respond to a lot of those. We are looking at a website freshen up for the city and for our department specifically. And in addition to that, we'll be updating all our forms. The forms do need to get updated in response to Senate Bill 5290. So if you're doing activity in the city, please don't rely on a recent download, but always go to the website and grab a new form. Cause so far I think I've updated maybe, I don't know, five or six of them. So just be aware of that. And the rest of the fees will get updated here in 2025. Let's see, new fees are coming soon to city council. They're scheduled for budget adoption next week on the 12th. So pending adoption, we'll be going forward to, for a study session with city council to look at new land used fees and along with building fees and other miscellaneous fees. We're looking at a cost recovery basis in response to Senate Bill 5290. So then that way we can account for all staff time and we can have proper staffing in order to meet the expedited review timeframes. In addition, we will be doing a file migration software process and program next year. And we also process all business license, home ox and solicitor license. So that's what the focus is for current. And so how does this tie into long range? Well, what comes before you, the policies and the codes, they ultimately get used in the permits and the development of the city. And I put this up here because I really feel it's important. You volunteer your time, right? You're here. Well, it's important that you're here because what you do defines on what's built in the city, how people function, how we interact with the environment and other people. So it's very important. And I just threw in, I love the lake sticker. So this brings us to the meat and potatoes of what, uh, Dave will be leading up for next year. We are going to throw in a few other planners, give him a break. He had a heavy workload this year with the periodic update. And so we want to give opportunity also for some of the other planners to get some experience in long-range planning. So in addition to seeing him, he'll be working and helping and mentor other planners, bring forward with you some of these projects here. So the process, the first step in the process is we come to you with our work program. We get the feedback. We go to city council. We get their feedback. You hold your joint city council meeting in January. We're working scheduling with the clerk with that. I don't think, we don't have a date yet, do we? No date yet. We're working on that. We did hear feedback from you folks. I can't remember who was at the council meeting before. Provided some feedback about wanting some more meaningful dialogue out of it. We will work on that and see what we can do to achieve that at that joint meeting. In addition to going over accomplishments, we want to make it a worthwhile meeting for both parties, both council and the planning commission. And then we'll obviously adjust the work program as necessary. On your work program, you will see a couple that look familiar from this year. We just didn't have time to get to all the work items. And so there are a couple carryovers on here. The comp plan, as you know, was adopted on October 22nd. Congratulations, Dave. He can have a sigh of relief here. And it's now effective and in place. We have new zoning maps. And Russ is working on designing covers and getting everything formatted for the comp plan before it's published. So look forward to seeing your hard work online. We've broken down the work program into four different categories. So you'll see the first one. First one's really the heavy lift. It's the implementation of a comprehensive plan. So here's all the changes that Dave had mentioned through the 2024 periodic update. We have the process code coming before you. We also have streets, sidewalks and parking. We're currently looking, um, at onboarding a consultant. We went out to bid last month for this project. And then we have the industrial center coming towards you. And let's see, we have the housing action implementation, which involves looking at our middle housing and also looking at design standards. We have critical area regulations that involve updating for best available science and including critical, uh, area aquifer recharge areas within the city. Most of ours are primarily over in the industrial area. So just be aware of that correlation with that. And then we have park impact fees also. We'll be working with the parks department for that and coordinating with them. And I should go back to streets and the parking. We'll also be working with Public Works. We're coordinating with them on that. So as far as comprehensive plan, you have a couple month break, but the annual docket, the citizen initiated deadlines, I think they're due January 31st. Is that right? I think they're, they're due. So if we have any city initiated ones, that's their cutoff of when they have to submit an application to the city. And then as far as the comprehensive plan changes goes for next year, we will be looking at the Parks and Recreation Open Space Update. That's their big update for them. Is there anything on that one you wanted to add? As far as the parks and recreation or anything?
No. So that's just on a slightly different update cycle than the overall periodic update. So that's something, um, that basically it's every six years, I think, for the parks updates. So they're on a slightly different. So we had opted not to do kind of a super thorough update to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Element, the 2024 update, because we knew that this required, uh, basically what's called a pros plan or parks recreation and open space plan was needed to be done in 2025. So, and we'll be working in coordination, obviously with the parks and recreation department.
They have lots of the good, good ideas they want to bring forward. They're, they're looking forward to their update for their department. Then we also have a sub-area plan update, which is why I put the new schedule in front of you because I added that in this evening. Russ reminded me we needed to go in and do our sub-area plans. So that's also on the list. And there is a placeholder there for the merger with the city, with the sewer district, because that potentially would have code changes to the utility chapter of our municipal code. Then of course, one or second to last topic is annexations. We haven't had one since 2021. So we do have this as a placeholder because we, we take petition annexations also. And then we typically annexation. So there are some portions on the east side of our city that we've looked at for consideration of annexation along with, uh, along SR 92. Let's see. And then we have a few others. I think there's one on the south, uh, the south of 20th also. So we have a couple little pockets left, as you can see on the map. I threw in the map just the city's grown over the years. Lastly, here's the catch-all bucket. I put the bucket up here because stuff always just seems to pop in. A lot of these things Russ goes to or attends or Dave or I will go to as backups. We have Snohomish County. SCT is what we call it Snohomish County tomorrow. We have the TAC. We have Economic Alliance. We also have AHA on here. And marketing projects that Russ does for economic development, along with the sale and development of the city properties. And with that, it's open for discussion. I mean, this is really your, your work agenda for the next year. And you do have a new commissioner coming on board too.
When will that happen?
So you can look forward to that. You'll have a full, full house. Which will be nice.
The, uh, park impact fees, just as it will follow the park and rec element of the comprehensive plan, meaning fourth quarter, like, I mean, towards the end of the year, is that what you're suggesting? And do you know what that's likely to entail? I've heard some nasty rumors. So personal opinion there.
The current park impact fee chapter is based on an old methodology that we don't use. So the, the chapter itself is completely out of date and we actually use a policy to implement our fees.
Okay.
So it's really methodology that's changing and we're waiting until the park plan is updated to make sure that it reflects the current level of service that the city will consider.
It needs an overhaul.
Yes.
I would simply, um, submit that I wasn't the one that said it, but I completely agree that the joint, uh, meeting with council be something substantial rather than us all looking at each other. I've done 18 of them and might be absent that evening if there's not something to do. So my only takeaway from our discussions, the last couple of meetings has been the transparency and communication of anything that's been done in the city. Obviously, we, um, had blowback on, on some things that were rumored, um, some misperceptions. And, um, I, I want to make sure that whatever we are tackling as a planning commission and as a city is well communicated out, specifically the parks, um, which I've also heard some nasty rumors about. And anything having to do with annexation. In addition to that, anything citizen initiated, when you say citizen initiated, it automatically goes to developer initiated. And I would be highly sensitive to, um, making sure that that's well communicated, how that's done, why that's done and whom that's done by. So other than that, I look forward to discussing these topics and, um, hope that we can make sure that the citizens that we represent are as well informed as they will allow us to, to make them.
Can I, I guess, make a? Can I, I guess, make a formal request, right, in preparation for that meeting with the city council? Can our planning commission meeting prior to that be a, hey, what is this meeting going to look like? What do we want to say, right? It's essentially an internal planning meeting. Obviously, with any input that the staff wants to provide towards how to make that effective as well, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, yeah, it'd be nice if we could at least spend time internally to say what do we want to get out of it.
I think it's a good idea to coordinate in advance and get the information down. So both planning commission and the council can think about that. And then that way you can come with thoughtful information and discussion points.
Thank you.
Anything else from planning commission? If not, I did want to throw out a suggestion. I was talking, Russ and Dave, just about the volume that's coming through and how things overlap. Russ had an excellent suggestion of perhaps having the first meeting of the month be on one particular amendment. And then the second meeting of the month be on the second item. And then that way you have, you can focus one meeting on one item and the second meeting of the month on the second and just keep that schedule until those two are completely done and move forward. So something to think about. Unless you like doing the two different needy topics in one meeting. Okay. You can handle it.
Yep.
Okay.
And for time's sake to, I mean, I would say, instead of having separate meetings, we can, you know, instead of having two one-hour meetings to have one hour and a half long meeting.
I would echo that, just ensuring that our, our time is used well, so we're not coming in for just a brief meeting, feels like filler at times.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. And the timing of that, the email. So if we receive something on a Thursday that we're meeting the next day and it's 364, like our last couple of meetings, um you put a weekend in there and it's, that's a lot to digest. So larger packets, larger advanced notes.
Yeah.
But we will continue to try to break up large projects like that into individual pieces. So obviously, you saw the assembled packages, you know, what created the link. Otherwise, you'd have the opportunity to review those elements individually, feedback, so.
All right, no other comments? Good. All right, we'll move on to the commissioner reports. Uh, Commissioner Morton. Commissioner Jennifer Davis. Commissioner Doer. And Commissioner Packard. Commissioner Huxford.
Yep.
All right, well, I gotta say something. So uh, this Saturday is the uh Lake Stevens Rotary, Rotary Club's annual fundraising event. Um, certainly invite the community to come out at Carlson Farms at 6:00 PM um on Saturday. This last year gave over $40,000 to uh Lake Stevens High School students uh to support their endeavorance as they went off to vocational training and um college and university, all that fun stuff. So um, yeah, just encourage the community to come out and support.
That's great.
All right, with that, uh, Russ, planning pressure support.
Sure. Um, and Christie mentioned this briefly. The um city council did have um rigorous hearing similar to the ones that you held for the comprehensive plan, um heard from the community, but they did adopt the plan as recommended. You know, we brought forward those additional uh recommended um areas that you wanted us to look at. So we did additional analysis, presented that to the city council. And really, at the end of the day, there weren't a lot of additional areas um at this point. But good discussion and they did take your recommendation and approve the comp plan. So that was a lot of work for all of us for the last year and a half plus. So that's really the, the big report out.
Um, actually, a question for you, if you don't mind. The northwest um corner here, Main Street. I know the, the, the White House been torn down, but any update on where that project is?
It's um halted right now.
It is, okay. All right, thank you very much. Hey, with that, motion to adjourn?
One second.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you post? All right, thank you so much. That'll adjourn the meeting for November 6th.
Well, thank you.